This is a joint meeting of the school committee and the board of selectmen.
We need another select board.
Andy Friedman and I conferred about how we would run the meeting. So before I sort of go over the, how we're going to do that, and we will be turning the meeting, the running of the meeting over to Dr. Darty, who is the school committee's, not only chief executive officer, he is also our secretary. I'm going to turn it over to him so that Andy and I can focus on the matter at hand. Before I do that, we have one item that we added to the agenda as a result of the snowstorm and cancellation of the board of selectmen's, the select boards' meeting last night. We have an item that we would like to honor this evening, and so I'd like to invite Amelia Barowski up. She has something to tell us.
I just have to quickly say, call the select board to order. Thanks, Elaine.
Great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Amelia Barowski. I'm a fifth grade student council representative from Barrows Elementary School. This year, the student council decided to celebrate Valentine's Day by spreading love and appreciation around town to thank all the people who make Reading special. I'm here to present everyone who works at Town Hall with handmade Valentine's cards from Barrows students to thank you for making our town a safe, clean place to live.
Excellent, Amelia, thank you. It looks like quite a pile of Valentines there, huh?
No, I, yeah, I'm all set for my wife now.
You know that, um, town manager Bob Lellashur could not be here this evening, and he was, he knew that this was going to be happening, and is extremely appreciative, and I'm sure all those Valentines are going to get handed out tomorrow at Town Hall. So that's awesome, and we really appreciate the Barrows community reaching out in the way that they did, and really setting a tone of appreciation and thankfulness, so that's great. Okay, so we are here this evening, I'm sure Mr. Berman's going to be, well, should be joining us very shortly, and I know Mr. Engslinger, we knew was going to be a little bit later. So the process when there's an opening on any of the committees, it's a process that is executed jointly by the boards. And Dr. Darty's going to go over some of the details, oh, here's Mr. Berman. And basically what we're going to do this evening is, the candidates, there's three candidates before us for the appointment on the school committee, which officially on our calendar, we have one school committee meeting before the election. So whoever is appointed to this meeting will serve on the school committee between now and then. We do have a posted meeting with the FinCom to present our budget and the school committee meeting, so that whoever is selected this evening will join us in those endeavors. The way that the process is going to work is the candidates will be given an opportunity to give a two-minute opening, then the members of these two committees will be, if at their option, permitted to ask each candidate one question. I'd like to make sure that all of us keep our questions to a question, one sentence. I timed myself, 15 seconds is actually a very meaty question, so if we can do that, that would be very helpful. And we'll try to give each candidate approximately about 15 minutes, and then in, when we've finished that, each candidate will have an opportunity to give a one-minute closing, and then this is a roll call vote. So, and Dr. Darty will, will manage that process first and hand that over. So I am officially going to hand the gavel to Dr. Darty because he's going to, I don't have to?
I don't need the gavel.
All right. I'm going to ask Dr. Darty to be our secretary. This does allow us to focus on the meeting, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't have to go over the process because you just did.
Well.
So this evening, we have three candidates, and they're in your packet, their information. We have Jeffrey Corm, Gina Healy, and Tom Wise, and we are going to have each candidate come up in alphabetical order, so we'll have Jeffrey Corm come up first. And as he's coming up, as Mrs. Webb said, Jeffrey will be allowed about a two-minute introduction, and then each member of either the select board or the school committee will have the opportunity to ask one question. We're hoping each candidate will have about 15 minutes total for the interview process. So, Mr. Corm?
Thank you, Dr. Darty, thank you Chairman Friedman, Jefferson Webb, and members of the school committee and select board. I guess, I applied because I was present at the school committee meeting when this temporary vacancy was discussed. I heard some concerns that the person appointed would need to get up to speed quickly on the budget and other school committee business, and I felt that really any of the budget parents who were there in that room that night would have been well-informed on the budget side for the upcoming meeting, as Ms. Webb mentioned, with FinCom, and I would be happy to serve the town in this capacity. As I listed on my application, I have been a budget parent a couple, four times over the years, and I also served as treasurer of the Yes for Reading override campaigns both times, so I have additional understanding of the town's side of the budget. So if you would like me to, to help you out in this interim time, I would be happy to do that for you.
Great.
Thank you. You may want to, yeah, because they're going to be asking questions. What we'll do is we'll alternate between school committee and select board, so Mrs. Webb, if you'd like to begin.
Mr. Corm, I'm just sort of interested in terms of where, where your motivation to be a part of public education comes from.
I was a public school student myself. Both my daughters are here at Reading High School and have gotten great educations, and I'd like to continue to see Reading Public Schools make strides forward and increase the educational opportunities for its students.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
You answered my question in your introduction, so I will cede my time to the, either one of the other select board members.
Okay.
Okay.
Dr. Doxer?
Go ahead.
No, no questions?
Um, he's going to choose everyone.
Oh, we're just going to, we're going to alternate.
Didn't catch that.
One of the challenges that was discussed is coming up to speed in order to be a part of this, the school committee for such a short time and so quickly. And one of the meetings, as Mrs. Webb said, is the budget meeting that's coming up, so I was just wondering how you would feel representing a budget that you didn't actually get to vote on at the FinCom meeting.
So certainly, I would expect that I'm not the only school committee member at that meeting, and that I would defer to them on most questions, but if I could add a little bit of color to the description based on my experience with my children here at the high school, then I would be happy to weigh in on that, or some historical perspective based on the four years of budget parent.
Thank you.
Salvareto?
What would you expect your contributions to be as a member of the school committee over the course of the next six weeks?
I really wouldn't expect much of a contribution over one, one and a half meetings in this particular instance. Mostly, I was looking to, if the, if the boards felt that you needed to seat someone based on the bylaws, then I felt that I was a qualified candidate to help you fill that gap.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. Dr. Doxer got some of my questions, but my question is, I guess, more pointed, do you have any concerns with the budget that's being presented to the finance committee?
No particular concerns with the budget this year, certainly the concerns that we have for the budget going forward as to, you know, special ed cost increases continuing, and where that trajectory goes, and how the town expects to look at that accommodated costs or whatever that would help us manage that into the future.
Thank you. Mr. Berman?
Thank you. Before I ask my question, I just wanted to, I know as a, as a select board, the reason why we're here is that we're replacing Sherry Vandenacker, who had to step down because of the death of her father, and I don't think that we, as a board, sort of expressed our condolences and her thanks for her service. I think she was a brief-time voice of teaching and learning in the district, and I know a lot of people will miss her, so I just wanted to kind of get that out there, sort of officially from the select board. I know I speak for my colleagues when I, when I say that. So Jeffrey, I've seen you at more school committee meetings than prob, you've probably been there as many as some of the school committee members themselves. Have you ever considered, did you consider this time, or will you consider in the future actually running and being an elected person of the school committee?
I will consider that in the future. I have a senior and a sophomore, and having gone through the senior year, you know, end of junior year, senior year with my senior, I'm looking ahead to next year this time, and I am foreseeing a very busy time with that, and I felt it was not a good time for me to run for the school committee position this year.
But you wouldn't rule it out in the future?
I certainly consider it in the future.
Mr. Blavin?
Yeah, Jeffrey, first of all, thank you. You are a familiar presence at school committee meetings, and we appreciate you participating in this process as a candidate tonight. My question for you is, could you identify a quality about yourself that you feel would be important as a member of the committee on a temporary basis, and give us an example of when you demonstrated that quality?
So one particular issue that I have is I have an intense attention to details, which was actually part of the reason they asked me to be the treasurer of the Birch Meadow PTO years ago, before they had actually filed their 501(c)(3) application. I pushed that all the way through, following, you know, all the rules and making sure that would go through. And there were a couple things in the, in the budget book. There was a gentleman who used to nitpick some of, well, who used to be very concerned about some of the grammar in their, I think he passed away recently, but I think, you know, in this short time, I might have a pass through the budget book and change a couple of commas here and a few or to a less in one instance. So in a short time, I think that might be something I could accomplish.
Thanks, thank you.
And Mr. Halsey?
Well, you guys did a good job. All the questions I had might have been asked, so.
It's optional.
Jeffrey, thanks for your offer to help, and I've had all my questions answered. Thank you.
And Ms. Barowski?
Mr. Blavin virtually took mine. I would accuse you of looking at my paper, but you're right over there. But I'm going to ask it a little bit more broadly, because I think it was a very good question. You are a familiar presence of the school committee, so do you see any particular quality of how the committee functions that you would want to emulate and continue, or anything that you say, boy, if I were part of that committee, I would suggest, you know, a change in either process or quality in some way?
I guess I'm not sure that in one meeting I'd, I'd hope to make a significant change to, to the operation.
Fair enough.
Thanks. Thank you.
If you'd like to make a concluding remark?
That's all right, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to have now Gina Healy come up?
Good evening.
If you'd like to make a short introduction?
Sure. Hi, my name is Gina Healy. I thank you for this opportunity. When I learned that there was this opening, I thought, this is an opportunity for me to share my expertise and experience. I'm a career educator. I've launched my career here in Reading High School. I learned tonight that Mrs. Webb was one of my former students, and that this is a community that I have loved, that my kids have grown up in, the schools have served me and my children very well, and I felt that I had something that I could offer to you in the form of my expertise as teacher, principal, and assistant superintendent, which is the position I retired from in New York. I am not, I have not been involved in politics, in local politics, but I have been involved in local community organizations. I should explain that my family lived in Reading for almost 30 years. My husband took a job in New York about 10 years ago, 12 years ago now, and we moved to New York, and so we've been, we were away from the community, but when we decided that we wanted to come back to Massachusetts, we were very clear that we wanted to come back to Reading, and so a year and a half ago, we did move back to the community. So in my former life, a long time ago, when, when we were here 10 years ago, I, I served mostly on, served the community mostly through my service in St. Agnes Church. I was on the music ministry there, CCD teacher for many years, and then also was involved in the schools and the activities that my kids were involved in, particularly as a sports parent and an advocate for, for what was happening in the schools at that time. Since we've returned, I've been more focused on service and community. I joined the Lions Club a year and a half ago when I first came back, and have been happy to make a contribution to the Reading community in that capacity. I also belong to the Reading Community Singers and serve on that board, and also ran the scholarship program for, for the Reading Community Singers this year, and I'm happy to say that for the first time in many years, we're going to be awarding that scholarship to a Reading High School senior this year. And I'm also involved in the Reading Neighborhood Network, which is a group of older residents in the community who are trying to find ways to stay in their homes as they age with the support of a network of volunteers, and I belong to that group. My expertise, as you've seen on my resume, I've been a teacher, as I said, launched my career here, and a principal, assistant superintendent, and assistant superintendent both in New York and in Massachusetts, so I have an experience with any number of education concerns and the problems that face schools everywhere, which are quite universal, actually, having worked now in two states and, and a variety of communities. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Webb, you get to ask your former teacher the first question.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask the same question, actually. I'm interested in your motivation for serving public education in Reading, in our community.
Sure. So I really believe that the future is the, is, our education is the future. It is what levels the playing field for us. It's part of our democratic, it's part of the fabric of a democratic society. I have very strong feelings about public education as, and I'm very mission-driven in that. I believe that the most important thing that can happen in schools is to have a qualified, highly-qualified teacher and highly-qualified principal in the school, in the classroom, and I think that, that the school board needs to balance the needs of the, of the taxpayers, but also provide the most outstanding educational opportunities that can be provided. That's really what we're about, and that's what I want for my children, that's what I want for your children. And as I said, my children were very well-served by the Reading Public Schools. My sons graduated in 2003 and 2005. One of them went on to Brown University, the other to Bryant, and both are successful, one living locally and working locally, the other in New York. So I think that we need to give back, and when I saw that this, I saw this opportunity, I thought, okay, this is something that I know, that I love, that I can do, and that I can give back to the community. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
First of all, very impressive resume.
Thank you.
My, I guess my question is, this is going to be, this appointment will be for a very brief.
Yes.
Period. So how much have you stayed on top of the current issues that the board is dealing with?
So I don't, I have to say that I've not been part of the finance committee or the budget. I do, I was following the kindergarten issue of some of the questions that come up in the paper, so I am aware of those. And so I, you know, that's, that's the level of, of understanding that I have of the specifics, but what I have to say is that many of the questions, how to balance special education costs and regular education, are really universal, for example, is a universal question. How to have a budget, I was very happy to, about the override, and, you know, how to, but, but how to balance the needs of taxpayers, and also how to fund schools is really a very difficult problem, and it's a problem that's facing schools, not just in Massachusetts, but in other, in other places. So I see, I feel that, that I may not know the intimate details of what's going on. I certainly have the background knowledge to be able to read it and understand it and get up to speed quickly.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Doxer?
I thank you so much for being here, and I'm excited about your expertise, and I'd love to think that you'll stay involved now, too, regardless of what happens today.
Sure.
My question is the same as before. It's a challenging situation to go in as a new school committee member to a meeting with the FinCom to talk about our budget, and since you were one of the school committee members that voted on it, I'm just wondering how you will approach that.
Okay, so on the administrative side, I will say that we've always had to support a budget, not necessarily a budget that was the budget that we loved, but the budget that we had, and I think that that's the way I would approach this, that these are, you know, I, I'm a team player, I'm a collaborator, and if this, if the school board and has, and the FinCom have decided on a particular budget, then that's what I need to get behind and support, do the research to make it the best possible situation, but, but to support that. And I would be comfortable doing that.
Mrs. Salvareto?
Thank you. My question is the same. What do you expect your contributions to be to the school committee over the course of the six weeks that the term is for?
So one of the things that I have going for me is that I am retired at this time, and I'm a retired educator, so I do have time. I know that there is a lot of research that goes into lots of decisions, and would be happy to do the legwork for the, for the committee that needed to be done for preparation for whatever the question or the conversation was going to be.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Dr. Doxer came into mind again, but I really don't have a, I think that answered my budget question, but I just wanted to, you know, I, I really applaud all of your active, community activity, and we've only been back, what, a couple of years or?
A year and a half, yeah.
That's, that's, you know, hopefully, as to the, someone's earlier point, if you don't get selected tonight, that you stay involved. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Engslinger.
Thank you.
Would you like to ask a question?
Not at this time.
Okay. Mr. Blavin?
Well, Ms. Healy, I'll leave my last question for someone else to ask, if you'd like, so I'll ask a different one. So this is one I can only ask you.
Okay.
You've been a principal for seven years, you've been assistant superintendent for three years. What has been your interaction in those administrative roles with school committees, and what have you learned from those interactions that you think might help us do our job better?
Well, I had, I've had wonderful interactions with school committees, not just as an administrator, but I was on the negotiating team, I represented the administrators' union in the negotiations in, when I was in Newton, and I was also on a joint oversight committee for the contract negotiations. So I've sat on both sides of the table in terms of contract negotiations, because as an assistant superintendent, I was negotiating with teachers for their, for their contracts. So, and, and working with the school board in, in those capacities. So I think that in Newton, we had a very collaborative process, and that, and that was a very positive experience, and, and I, one that we replicated also when I was in Bedford, in New York. I have, as I said, I attended the regular school board meetings in New York as the administrator presenting the personnel part of the budget, part of the agenda and, and budget as well, and so had developed a good working relationship. I think openness, candor are really the keys to, to, and collaboration. I think that we're, we are not serving cross purposes. We are here for the same reason, we're here for students and to, to provide the best opportunities that we can for students, and I think that in remembering what our mission is, is really important.
Mr. Halsey?
Well, again, these questions are, you know, my friends over here are good at getting to the point, and they have done a good job, but I'd just like to say to you that you've had a career certainly extremely well-spent, and a lot to be proud of, and I want to especially thank you for your return to Reading and your return to being an active citizen. I really applaud what you're doing in helping seniors to stay in their homes. It's not an easy thing to do. Almost seems like cross purposes when we spend money and raise taxes and then have seniors struggling, but it's great to know that somebody with your background is working hard, you know, with seniors in this town, and I want to thank you for that. And thank you for your application here as well.
Thank you.
Mrs. Barowski?
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Blavin. So you clearly have a lot of experience working on a variety of different kinds of boards, and a very deep and impressive resume. So my question is, from that experience, are there any qualities that you see as particularly valuable and important to bring to board work or committee work?
I think the most important thing is to be able to listen carefully, and to be respectful of other people's opinions, but I think only in truly listening do you really understand somebody else's perspective and point of view.
Thank you.
And Mr. Berman?
Thank you. Also incredible resume, and thank you for moving back to Reading from New York. You could have gone anywhere between here. We're appreciative of that.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you the same question I asked Mr. Corm. You've applied for this, but you chose not to pull papers to actually run for the position. Do you see yourself at any time actually becoming a candidate for the school committee?
So I don't think of myself as a particularly political person, and so that's, you know, I, so, so initially, I think, I thought, no, but the more I've thought about it, this is a way to serve the community, and it is a way for, for me to share my expertise. Right now, I supervise student teachers through Bridgewater State University, and I'm enjoying that very much, because I don't want to give up everything about education that's still very important to me. But, but this is another way to be able to serve both the community and the children of that community, and to share my lifelong expertise.
Thank you.
Would you like to make any concluding remarks?
Well, I just thank you for this opportunity, and I really appreciate the questions that you've asked. I think they're very thoughtful, and I look forward to perhaps serving with you, and, but if not, then I will be supportive of all of the things that you do for the schools.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our last candidate this evening is Tom Wise.
I always find it hard coming to this lectern because I'm too tall for it, so apologies. As you can see in front of you, I've prepared an applicant statement, and then I'm happy to answer any questions as necessary. By way of introduction, my name is Tom Wise. I'm interested in this appointment because I believe I can be a productive member of the school committee, even over the short period of time the appointment covers. I believe this has been, I have, I believe that as I've been actively following the committee, including budget, policy, and other key topics for quite some time, as of the close of business on Tuesday, the 20th, the 12th of February, I am the only person seeking this appointment that has also declared my intention to run for a permanent position on the committee. This further demonstrates my serious interest and commitment on taking this role. Additionally, any time spent training me for the interim school committee member position will be that much less time I need in getting up to speed, should I win, not presuming should I win, a seat in the upcoming April election. With respect to my professional background, I'm currently the head of enterprise data for a large asset management firm in Boston. Historically, I've run large application development organizations and managed staff of various experience and skill levels, in excess of 150 people. Managing that number of people brings about its own challenges, but I've learned the ability to manage large budgets to the penny while driving strategic change and implementing complex programs over long periods of time. Such change does not happen without detailed focus on communication to all stakeholders and execution planning. From a personal perspective, my family and I moved to Reading in the spring of 2006 after executing a thorough analysis of the towns north of Boston. We were looking for a strong public safety rating. We were looking for a strong public safety rating, options for commuting into Boston, and most of all, and probably most important, strong public schools. My children are now 11 and 13, and both attend Parker. Both started their Redding Public School experience at Joshua Eaton. The struggles that Joshua Eaton faced after the 2013-2014 school year brought about my initial engagement in trying to help our schools become stronger and provide more opportunities for growth for our children. My, my engagement began as a member of the Joshua Eaton Task Force, also known as JETF, throughout the winter of 2014 into the spring of 2015. Through that process, I was introduced to many wonderful parents and teachers that truly had the children's best interests at heart. While in Task Force, I learned many things that I believe will be helpful in my role as school committee member. Some examples, but not limited to these, are building an understanding of how professional learning communities work throughout the teacher community, both across grades and across schools. Learning how teachers and administrators use both standardized testing data and district-determined measures to assess students for growth, learning gaps, and provide early interventions. Through my participation in Joshua Eaton's World Cafe, including helping facilitating community discussion groups, devising topics, and analyzing the resulting data, I gained significant, pardon me, information, insight into the perceptions of both the parent, teacher, constituent basis with respect to Joshua Eaton and the Redding Public Schools as a whole. Unfortunately, that process ended rather abruptly, and the task force was not able to bring about the change for which we were charged. At the time, I highly considered running for school committee, but had too many other commitments that would prevented me from being productive in that role. Some of those other commitments and volunteer activities include, I was working with the town at the time, with both, with the Board of Selectment, as it was then called, now Select Board, the Community Planning and Development Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Conservation Commission, and the Ad Hoc Zoning Advisory Committee, to enable my family to build an addition to our house so that our in-laws can move in with us. The age, age and place has been very near and dear to my heart. I've also been a very active coach and coordinator for a Redding United Soccer Club for the last seven-plus years, give or take. I've coached Little League baseball, I've been a town meeting member, so I've been very active in this community. Over the last several years, due to my participation on the JETF, and as a result of my roles as coach and coordinator for RUSC, I've had the pleasure of meeting more and more members of our school, school community. I've heard stories of success and stories of struggle. I've had, I've seen pockets of improvement and pockets of regression. Personally, while I do, I do have one child on an individualized education plan, my family has been blessed with generally positive experiences, and my wife and I are believers in public education, both of us are products of it. However, due to what I hear from other families and my belief in public schools in general, I feel compelled to stand up and try to help improve our own schools as we go forward. To do so, I've recently rolled back my time commitment for RUSC to free up more time for school-related tasks. While historically, I've watched many school committees from home, I've attended every budget meeting and regular school committee meeting throughout January and February of this year. It was good to see the override money used in alignment with what was requested. However, in looking forward, there are still many financial challenges facing the school district. I'd like to be part of the collaborative effort to help with those challenges, prioritize the funding we need, and assist with the execution. My professional background can assist me in this process. I'm regularly faced with trade-offs in strategic needs versus tactical implementations. I also regularly must review contracts with vendors to squeeze out mutually agreeable concessions and align what we need versus what we want. Frequently, this need versus want analysis is assisted by detailed data analysis of usage, forecasted future desires, and understanding the competitive landscape with which we work. In many cases, these negotiations have led to significant savings for our firm with limited impact on our ability to execute. I expect to be able to bring these skills to bear as we work through and proactively address the challenges facing Redding Public Schools in the next few years, or in the next six weeks, as the case may be. Finally, as previously mentioned, I'm the only candidate for this appointment that has declared an intention of running for a permanent position, but I'm also aware of the concerns of grandstanding that were raised in this, in this hall, and also raised at the Select Board. While I'll not stop my campaign for the permanent seat, I'm fully commit that there will be no grandstanding, and my campaign will focus on putting forward my platform for positive improvements while focusing on three pillars of responsibility of the school committee: policy, financial management, and goal-setting review process. Thank you for your consideration.
Dr. Darty, can we start the questions this time in the reverse order? I received a request, would that be okay? Can you call on the people in the reverse order?
Sure, absolutely.
Well, I know where they're going to go.
So, Mr. Berman?
So, thank you for stepping up and, and actually taking out your papers to run for a full-time seat. If you were elected to, I'm actually going to ask you the question, assuming you get elected, because it's the longer-term process. What would be your top, two priorities that you would like to see things done that may not be done in the future, that may not be done now, that aren't being done now?
Two is, is a very limiting answer. Just, I'll start with the first one, which I've just been discussing with quite a few people for quite some time. And I, I have to find the right balance of what legally we can do versus what we can't do. And that is special education in particular, and the way in which we, as a school committee, can help move and improve the relationship with parents. Through my, my fact that my son's on an INP, through my JETF time, there've been a lot of parents that have confided in me in various different things. There've been a lot of challenges, and some of that is legally bound from an IDEA perspective, IDEA. But I also think that there are ways we can make it a more proactive, more positive experience if we choose to do so. And I think we can, so that would be one of the ones I would focus on primarily. The second one, I think, and this is probably a little bit more loaded, but it is what it is, is the external communication by the body to the community. I, I feel like the school committee could be more proactive in addressing things more quickly than sometimes happens currently. For example, I think you all probably saw what happened with North Redding Transportation just a few days ago. If you didn't, a school bus driver, you know, came to the, the bus stop, and the parents were there, and they, no kids got off. And the school bus driver said, oops, I forgot to pick them up. And that started a big social media storm amongst some of the parents, to which one of the school committee members jumped in and said, we've got this, we're looking at it, we're working with the superintendent, please don't keep panicking, we'll get an answer as quickly as possible. That was both on the social media board and on the posting. So it's not that you're going to solve all problems all the time, but when something is brewing quickly, I think there's a more proactive way to address the problem.
Thank you.
Mrs. Borowski?
Hi, thank you for your application. So I'll ask a version of the same question. In observing the school committee as you have, I've seen you at several of our meetings, or in other work that you've done, are there any qualities that you particularly admire and would want to emulate doing this kind of work?
I mean, from an admiring perspective, you guys are extraordinarily respectful of each other in the way you run. And I, I think that's, that's definitely something to be admired, and I wouldn't want to break that in any way, shape, or form. But I do want to make sure, I would bring slightly different than that, is I think things a little differently. Just being a data and a numbers and a, you know, core foundational strategic guy, that's just who I am, I think things a little bit differently, so I'd probably bring a little bit avenue of, a little bit different avenue of questions at times, which would be meant with the best intentions of trying to achieve the positive goals, but may sometimes be stronger, I don't know if the right word is for that, just as a means of probing and seeing if we can achieve something a little bit different.
Thank you.
Mr. Halsey?
Yeah. And as I, as I said, I do know where everybody's questions are at this point, and all of them have been asked pretty much of the other candidates. And so it would be my opportunity to ask you one, but honestly, Tom, your applicant statement answers the things that I would be concerned with, which is, you know, who you are and what your goals are, and it sounds like you've just enunciated to the previous two speakers those things that you are interested in accomplishing and continuing. So I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blavin?
Yes. So one thing I was noted in your, your initial application, but I'd like to learn more about, you, you mentioned I have experience setting policy. Can you tell us about, or give us an example of that experience that you think would be helpful to you on the school committee?
Great question. Policy is all a relative term, right? I don't have experience in setting policy as is written in our policy manuals with legal-related relations. My experience in policy is with regards to data policy and usage. As the head of enterprise data, one of my responsibilities is making sure people use the right data at the right time for the right purpose. And so in, in writing policy along those lines, it's what data should you be using, what type of key-value information should you be using, not using the wrong information as your driving key and therefore messing up the way in which your data would relate appropriately, as well as things like your policy should be, data should be in a master system, not spread out all over the place. You should have a central stewardship team that's responsible for it, you should understand the definition of what that data is and where it's going. Those are the type of policies that I refer to in that application.
Mr. Enslinger?
Thank you. Thank you, Tom, for putting your candidacy forward for the next seven weeks, and in addition to that, being on the ballot for the full position. I put a lot of, you know, weight behind your decision to do that, believe me. You mentioned the need to improve communication with constituents. Do you have some specific suggestions for the committee to do that?
I do. And this is where it's going to get a little bit more challenging, and the execution, right? If you read through the policies that we have as a school committee, we have a couple of policies that say we are focused on providing a public service. We also have the electronic communications policy, which with open meeting law-related stuff makes it seem as though no school committee member should ever engage in social, social media-related stuff. So my approach would be a little bit different one, which would be a proactive social media-related policy, but addressing some of the things that would be potential open media law, open media, open meeting law-related concerns. In particular, if you don't get to Quorum because you can't possibly get to Quorum, then you might be able to address some of those concerns. So if you had a rotation of, say, one or two school committee members over a period of time that was the voice, you could potentially avoid an open media law-related possibility. These are all ideas, obviously, they need to be flushed out and validated whether they work or not, but that's an idea in that space. And so also by rotating, you don't end up with one voice that is the dominant voice, and one voice that is always looked at necessarily as either the right voice or the wrong voice or the, you know, whatever, but it's, it allows each school committee member to do what they're willing to do for that, that one-month period of time, and then back, back off and not have to be responsible for responding as appropriate.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Tom. So when you make a transition from a parent to a school committee member, and you're, you're always going to have, you're at the meetings, you see, there's, there's a lot of constituencies that come in and, and, and want things that, that we can't always do. And as a member of the general public, it's, you're, you have the ability to, to weigh in on that. But as a school committee member, you, you probably need to carry the, carry the, the majority of the board or the, your, how do you, how would you deal with that? That, that is a transition to have to say no to something as opposed to just saying they should be finding a way to do it. You follow what?
Yeah, I follow the question completely. I think it's a very similar question to, to the business world in that regard, right? You know, in my role, people want all sorts of data all the time for whatever reason they want to do it, right? Oh, they should always have access, and especially in the data world, it's access to data, access to, access to data. But the wild, wild west assume, you know, and happens, and then you can't control anything, right? So I think the, the answer to that question from my perspective is a set of priorities, and working down those, that set of priorities and saying, have we achieved it? I use a lot of decision trees, for example, in the way in which we prioritize some of the work at, at my company. You're not going to please all the people all the time. If you try to, you'll fail anyway, right? So how do you work your way from a logical perspective? And that's just the way my mind works, is mathematical, logical perspective down the decision tree about how you're going to work through things. And for example, one of my first things that I would be looking at is how are we making sure, absolutely unequivocally, no doubt, no doubt about it, sure that we are adhering to every state and federal law we need to? That's our first thing. We want a lot of things that are best, that are best practices, but if it's not a state or federal law, right now, we should, it should be below that list, in my mind. So then you, that may mean there's going to be some, some difficult, challenging conversations. And, you know, full-day kindergarten would be one in particular that would be a conversation in that mind, and how do we achieve that, given the constraints we have from a space perspective, other things like that. So that may be an unpopular position, but there may be a need to make those kind of decisions, working down that decision tree as necessary. And then, once you've done that, if you can explain your justification, yes, they're not always going to agree, and I know that, I've seen it, and very compelling parents coming up and having their own, their own children and the challenges they go through, but if you're able to explain it and provide a logical reason for it, nine times out of 10, in my experience, people will understand, and it sets a boundary by which they can operate.
Thank you.
Mrs. Alvarado?
Thank you. I noticed in your opening statement that you said that it was good to see the override money used in alignment with what was requested. I'm curious if you supported the override and what your thoughts more broadly are on the current financial situation of the schools?
I did support the override. I was a yes-but voter at the time. Yes, we do need it, I was convinced at the time, but I wanted to make sure that we were very careful about how we managed it. Because, and I think we, even at the time, you all were very clear that this is not a seven-year fix, this is a three- or four-year fix as it was. So if that's the case, you know, is there a way we can spread that? We know we have debt exclusions coming to the end from RMHS and the library, but we also know that kilim is just something waiting out there in the end from a debt exclusion perspective, unless we can think of other ways to handle things. So part of that conversation is a joint with this group, but also with FinCom about what our best way forward is. We would be looking frankly to the Select Board to make sure the revenue is improving, because that is a fundamental underwriting driver. We do have an issue in what, from a, you know, contractual perspective, in that 82% of our budget is teacher money, essentially, and that is locked in at more than the 2.5%. So we're already building up a debt to a degree in terms of what we can for, can afford over the long run. So part of what I want to look at is making sure that we are doing everything we can. While we have, for lack of a better way, flushed, we're not flushed, but while we are positive, for lack of a better term, let's make the strategic investments that we need to make so that three or four years down the road, we're not having to go buy something new that would be a budget buster, for lack of a better way to put it. Whatever we buy, make sure it can last to the point it needs to last. I don't know if that fully answered your question, Ms. Alvarado, but hopefully it did.
Thank you.
Dr. Doxer?
Thank you for both applying for this and for the long-term seat. Right now, it takes a huge commitment to even run, so thank you very much. My question's going to be similar to what I've been asking, but I'm going to add a caveat, because I understand what you're saying about mathematical, logical decision trees, and one of the difficult things about education is that our subjects, our children, are not easily widgetized. They're not widgets. They're living human beings with lots of idiosyncratic needs and demands. And so you will be walking into a budget discussion that we've already passed a discuss, we've already passed a budget, the school committee has. And so I'm wondering how you will feel and, and how you will represent the school committee that you're entering into in those budget discussions, and how you will grapple with the multi-dimensional aspects of the students that we're trying to address their needs of, including the special needs and regat, and the whole picture, full-day kindergarten space, the whole thing.
Yep. So I guess the first, the first part of that answer is relatively straightforward. It was voted unanimously, five to nothing. It is what it is in that regard. And at the time, I was not a sitting member, but I can now sit there and say, this is what the committee voted for, and that is what it is. The second part of the question is, is far more deep than that, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it. And there's no easy answer. I'm not pretending that there is an easy answer. Yes, they're not widgets, but what we need to make sure of is that we provide the right opportunities for the constraints that we have. We have to recognize and put the constraints out that we have. And when we, this group probably collectively decides that we want to And when we, this group probably collectively decides that we want to change the constraints, then we make the, the argument to the electorate, for lack of a better way to say it, that this is what we want to change the constraints for and this is why. And we have a very firm, detailed understanding for it. There's a perception, and I don't know that it's fair necessarily, but there's a perception that we don't necessarily understand all of why some of the money is driving the way it is. I think there's a very clear answer in the budget book about the teachers and where they're going. I think there are some places in the budget book, and I think the words were here and spoken probably 20 times in the first two days, of placeholders, 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 that we're probably going to need to provide more information for to the public in the long run as a point of note, right? And I think what also probably should come forward is that the school committee and the superintendent have a habit of taking, putting the budget as it is, but then returning money at the end of the year, 500,000, 400,000, whatever, back to FinCom, back to free cash. And that needs to be more well-understood, for lack of a better way to say it, by the community as well. One of the things, and again, I don't know whether this is legal, and so it's a conversation to do with FinCom, one of the things I'd like to see is whether or not we can set up a, a reserve account, for lack of a better way, from the school perspective, to say, we'll show you we're good stewards of our money, we'll put it in this reserve account so that we can use it for something else, whether it's full-day kindergarten, whether it's, you know, reducing the debt on buying a new, or rebuilding a new building, something else along those lines. I'm not an expert in that, in the municipal finance law, so I'm not going to proclaim I am, but that's just another potential way to look at some of those things. Can we give money back to get money in the future? Can we make an investment in savings to make, to use that money with some growth of 3% or whatever over a year to, to pay back, to pay down something in the future? I don't know. I'm just throwing some ideas out that might, might be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman.
Yes. Thanks for applying and thanks for running. I guess I changed my question up based on something you mentioned about the teachers in your opening statement. And what is your take on if the two, if the salary increase for the teachers was justified and/or if it wasn't just justified and why?
The teachers are the direct line for our children. And I'm a believer in, for lack of a better way to say, pay for performance, but with union contracts, it's very hard to do that. I know we have many longstanding, excellent teachers that more than deserved that. It's very hard from a municipal perspective, though, when you have a fixed budget of 2.5% and that is what it is, and you're not going to go above that unless you do something But I would also say, I would have liked to see potentially a few more, for lack of a better way to say it, clawbacks into the, into the contract. You know, incentives for doing more. You know, they have the, I forget what the word is called, but when, when a teacher goes and teaches music on the side, they get a stipend. That's the word I'm looking for. Thank you. I would like to also see that if a teacher has some disciplinary record for a period of time, that something happens as a result of that. Many of our teachers are excellent. There are a few that are not, and there should be consequences.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Webb.
Yes. So your statement answered my question about motivation for public education, so I think I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to make any conclusions?
The only conclusion is we, I thank you for the time here tonight. I appreciate all of your willingness to come out on an extra night, in many cases, to sit and fill the position. And I hope, if you select me, that I can serve in a fashion that you would be appreciative of. So, thank you.
So at this point, unless there's any further discussion, we would go to a roll-call vote of each candidate. Because there are 10 members, there would be, six would be required for a candidate to fill the vacancy. And you would not, you would only be able to vote in the affirmative for one of the three candidates.
Mr. Burman has a question on the process.
I just, now, in the third time involved in this.
It's, it's actually been five.
I think it might be maybe a richer discussion if, rather than, what I would suggest is maybe we put all three names in nomination and then we have a conversation. And then at that point, it, maybe a candidate emerges and I, I just think it's, I'd like to, rather than just raise my hand for one of the, I'd like to hear what other people think.
No, I, no, all three names do go forward for nomination.
Right. It's, we, Dr. Darty and I actually, Mr. Friedman discussed that we would take the vote in basically alphabetical order, which also happens to be the order in which all the candidates submitted their nominations. So I think, and you, we allocated really the, we're sort of at that allocation. I think if there's a question to ask, you can, we could ask, we could entertain if there's any additional questions. But I think at this point, we move to the vote.
I guess, Mr. Chair, Madam Chair, whoever's providing, presiding here, I'd like to know not only who my colleagues and, and school committee people are voting for, but I want to know why, because maybe that might change my mind about who I might vote for, so.
That's, Mr. Bobbin.
I'm with Barry. I am really interested and have in the past benefited from my colleagues on the school committee sharing our views in open, public deliberation. I found that very helpful. So to the extent the format permits, can, you know, our, our combined boards to share any comments or impressions they may choose to share, I would welcome that before I have to make a selection.
So I, I think we, we are on a timeframe, the select board also have a meeting, and I think this is a very, as a, I have also participated in this process, and so I know how uncomfortable it is to sit there and hear this, but I would allow if anyone would like to make a comment on where their thinking is, but I'm going to ask you to just make a brief comment about it so that members can, can listen. And if, so if anybody would like to make a comment on their sort of current thinking. Do you, Barry, want to make a comment?
I have a question and a comment. First, I just asked you questions per Chair Webb's instructions, but I would like to, again, thank you for coming forward. You all have excellent resumes, obviously, and bring different skills to the, to the board. The question that I have is, this appointment is for the next seven weeks or so.
Yes, one school committee meeting on March 28th. And technically, we have a meeting with the financial committee on February 27th. And we're posted for that meeting, and that is the meeting we present our budget.
So is the, your next meeting, the main topic, what was the main topic of your next meeting?
We actually have some topics related to capital and.
Is it going to be a capital update? There will be two quarterly updates, one for personnel and one for finance. There will be most likely an update on Niasc, which is the high school.
And if, depending upon how the process.
And there'll be an appointment of, hopefully, of a director of student services.
Right. School committee will.
Okay. Thank you.
We have some candidates. Does anyone else would like to share a comment or a thought?
I guess I'll stick my neck out. I really appreciate all of you applying. I'm planning to vote for Mr. Quorum because I think he's been a constant presence and a positive catalyst for thought and discussion. And I think that he's up to speed and I would absolutely love if other people would stay involved. I hate campaigns because I hate shutting people out of positions they want to volunteer I think that that does take time to get up to speed, and so I really relish when you are up to speed to participate. And I, I say the same thing to you, Mr. Wise. Some of your answers about the open meeting law concern me because deliberation happens whether you're taking part in the conversation or you're listening to other members deliberate about the things that you have on the table. And money at the end of the year is mandated, returned, because if it's within the special ed budget, like that 500,000 you were referring to, it has to go back. It can't get spent on something else. That's not to say there aren't good ideas in what you said, but my feeling is, we have one meeting and the FinCom, and I think that Mr. Quorum is right up to speed with us. And so I'm sticking my neck out at the risk because I don't want to hurt your feelings and I really appreciate your participating, but that is where my thinking is right now.
So the select board is technically the appointing authority and we're privileged to be here, but I would very much like to hear from the school committee members because this is going to affect all of you directly over the course of the next seven weeks. So while I have my opinion on the three candidates, and I thank you all for coming here, this ultimately affects, this is about the school committee. So we could just do a straight vote, but I feel, while I have the information from the three candidates, I, I don't have a lot to go on from the school committee itself. And frankly, it affects all of you. So not to put you all on the spot, but I'm going to put you all to the spot.
Any other committee members who would like to share anything? She was asking the school committee members, so, Ms. Barowski.
I will try to be brief because a lot of what I'm going to say is echo what Dr. Doxer just said. I am, this is not the first time, this is every time this happens, we're so lucky to have candidates of your quality applying for these positions. Like, so thank you very, very much for stepping up and applying for this vacancy, and in the case of Mr. Wise, pulling papers and running for a permanent seat. So I am very grateful to you, and I have an overwhelming desire to ask that you all find ways to continue to be engaged because, like Dr. Doxer, I wish we had three seats. That being said, I'm inclined, at this moment, there was something Mr. Quorum said that really resonated with me. He said, if I can help out for the next seven weeks, I'm willing to. And that's sort of the position, that's what this is, right? The loss is we have to fill the vacancy, we have to fill the vacancy. It's one, maybe two meetings. And you do have, with your background as a budget parent and your engagement with the schools for many years, you really are in a good position, I think, to do that. So that's where I'm leaning at this moment.
Mr. Robinson and then Mr. Bobbin.
So obviously, a, a challenging year for me, obviously, being up for reelection and doing this, but I'll just be very pointed and blunt. The way I've always done this is, and we've done a few of these, is, is, and I, I appreciate, I think everybody's great. I wish, you know, there was, we had a bigger committee, but I think that by virtue of the fact that, that Mr. Wise took out papers, we should respect that and allow him to, for the appointment.
Ms. Bobbin.
So I'll bring another perspective to the table. Just for my impressions, just very quickly. So, Mr. Quorum, thank you. It's, you're, you spend a tremendous amount of time with us at school committee meetings. You make tremendous points when you've chosen to speak publicly. And I, I, no doubt in my mind that you're certainly up to speed on, on all of the storylines and, and issues the committee has, and you've demonstrated mastery of those issues in your public comments. I've always been very impressed. Mr. Wise, I want to thank you for taking the plunge and formally declaring a candidacy for a position in the committee. This committee needs, you know, the participation of the public, and, and you've chosen to extend your commitment to your community. You know, I noticed you spent a lot of time with the Joshua Eaton Task Force, and I think that, that experience, as well as some of your others, would, would be very helpful. So I think we're in the fortunate position that, that I think all of our candidates have really important experience, but it's, it's Ms. Healy's experience that really has my attention for the issues that this committee faces in its one remaining meeting. We're a very important appointment of a head of, I believe it's student services, is that the formal title of the position? It's very important for special ed, which is an area we've spent a lot of time as a committee from the budget perspective. It's a, it's our highest-growth cost center. There's a lot of challenges in that area. I think having, having Ms. Healy as, as part of our discussions, asking questions, bringing her perspective as 10 years as a principal and assistant superintendent, she's literally been on the administrative side of a lot of the challenges we face. I know not in Redding, but I welcome that outside perspective because for me, it would be really valuable to see someone help, help us get some, some fresh thought and fresh ideas perhaps. So I think for the particular issues we have in the next month, she would, right now, would be the person I'm favoring, but I'm open to listen to perspectives and I may change my mind after I hear others speak, but that's where I am right now.
I'll just comment that in preparing for this process after Mrs. Van De Nekker's resignation, I had a lot of conversation with, we're fortunate to have, in the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, field directors that we can rely on as resources to us. And one of the issues that she, she brought and discussed and said that often it is, it becomes an issue for school committee members, I mean, school committees in advance of election to have a candidate who's also running for election put on the board. And I understand, Mr. Wise, you would have no, no intention of grandstanding and would, would not do that, but the sheer ability to be on the board and obtain that advantage over, there is another candidate in the race, there are three, three candidates for the three-year position. And in fact, many committee members or many committees or select boards would choose not to appoint this close to an election. So from that perspective, I really appreciate everyone participating. I think Mr. Quorum and Ms. Healy are outstanding candidates, and, and people have spoken already, Dr. Doxer, Mr. Bobbin, Ms. Barowski, about the attributes that they would bring to this board in the short period of time. And so I would be, I'm leaning in the direction of Mr. Quorum or Ms. Healy, and when we take our vote is when I, we need to decide. So the way that the vote works, we vote, the first candidate we'll take a vote on is Mr. Quorum. And Dr. Darty, if the, if there are six votes, then I believe we are completed with the voting. If there's not six votes, then we vote all three candidates and then we bring it, this is, I think, what happened when, last time, we bring it down too, and then it's sort of, you vote the top two candidates until you get one candidate that has six votes. So I'm going to.
Did Barry have a question?
Yeah, I'll, go ahead. If you guys, I know, you wanted to hear the committee members weigh in, but if any other select board members have a comment. Yes.
So I actually, in agreement with the direction, Mrs. Webb, that you were going, I, this is now the third process I've been involved in. The first two, when, Nick, when we appointed you, and then also when we appointed Sheri the year later, that was late fall. And override years and the budget was just coming to the committee. The committee was going to be extremely shorthanded. It made sense to make that, those appointments then because the committee really needed that, that, that extra pair of hands. We're now six weeks away, seven, six and a half weeks away from an election. The budget is already going to be out of the committee by the time whoever we appoint will be sitting down. And I'm also very, very reticent to appoint somebody who's also going to be on the ballot. All of us here are sitting in these seats by the fact that we've actually faced the voters, some of us more than once, and basically, they gave us the authority to be here. Now with Mr. Parks, who I understand, you're the only two-year person, if he had applied, I would do that because he would be the de facto, you know, de facto committee member for this particular seat. But the fact that Mr. Wise is running, and then I think there's maybe one or two more other people, I'm not sure, that really does give an unfair advantage. And I don't think that it's really up to 10 people to decide who is going to sit on that board. It's, it's going to be up to the voters. So I, I'm actually going to lean toward appointing one of the two folks who have graciously raised their hands to serve, not, and, but I want to be, make particularly clear, not as a repudiation of anything that Mr. Wise believes in or says. I think if he goes in front of the voters and the voters say yes, I'd be, well, he'll be a colleague and somebody that I'm sure will make a really good contribution to the committee, but I think that even though your name would not appear on the ballot at saying incumbent, campaign literature and everything else would be, say, I was appointed. And I just don't think. be, say, "I was appointed." And I just don't think that that's a fair thing for 10 people to, to make that decision. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go in the direction of either Mr. Quorum or Ms. Healy. But again, only because I don't think that this group of 10 really should be in the business of appointing somebody so close to the election. So, that's my thought.
Any other comments?
Hi.
Yeah?
Oh, Mr. Ensminger, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have to take some exception to the rationale that has just been presented by three of the members. Every single one of these folks here had the opportunity to take out papers. One chose to do so, two didn't. And I'm not making judgments about why they did or didn't, I'm just stating a fact that they did. Similarly, well, one candidate is already on this board, but the two that are running could have all come forward. And I believe Ms. Kelly did not choose to present her credentials here. If you think about what's going to have to happen in the next few weeks, the winner will be sitting with the superintendent and getting a training session. It would be a shame to see that training kind of used for six, seven weeks and I realize they'll stay involved. And then, poof, that candidate disappears. Listen, Mr. Wise will be attending probably two meetings or whoever wins. I'm gonna vote for Mr. Wise. You can try before you buy. If you don't like what you see, if you see grandstanding in either of those meetings, then don't vote for him. If you like what you see, you can. But I want to stress, every one of these candidates, and it's not a dirty process. Elections are how we get here, Linda. Seriously.
I didn't see it was dirty.
I, I don't know what you said, but it kind of threw me the wrong way there. It's the mother's milk of democracy, please.
Mr. Ensminger?
Yes.
Let's not do that. Okay.
I've said what I've said.
Thank you. There's no further comment. I don't want to rebut anything.
No, 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 I, I don't want to rebut that. I, I, I just want to say how difficult it is to choose between someone who, who has got professional credentials in this area and someone who's been a budget parent and very familiar with the budget and has gone to many of the meetings and participated. That's a challenge for me. And the other school committee members didn't help me answer it, so.
Mr. Bobbin and then, oh, sorry, Mr. Halsey first.
Has everybody else had a chance to speak?
Yes, at least once, yep.
So, this probably won't be a big surprise to anybody, but I come from a little more, I come from an absolute practical standpoint. And that has, at this moment, I look at the credentials of the three people involved, any one of these three people would be an exceptional candidate to fill this spot. I, I'm convinced of that, particularly having had a chance to hear them speak about their interest in doing so. So, for me, this is not about choosing a person, it's about choosing a process. We made a decision recently at a Board of Selectmen's meeting, Board of Select Board, yeah, I gotta get my terminology correct, sorry. So, we made a decision based on some advice and reading of the law that said we shall do this. So, we decided that shall do this means that we're here tonight. There were some members of our, of our board who didn't think it was a great idea, that thought it might be a waste of time for such a short period of time. There, we had the implication that, from the school committee, that some thought it was a good idea, others thought it was, you know, again, such a short window of time that it might not be practical. But we're here. So, back to the practical side. We have two people who could come, add value, and then be sideline players at best. And we hope they will be. Either one of them, you know, somebody here is going to get picked, I think. Although, you start to look at it, you begin to wonder if there's going to be six votes in any direction, which is an interesting thought. What I see is the following. I see that Tom Wise raised a couple of things that, you know, caused fair concern. And that would be normal for a person who is thinking about joining, you know, trying to join a board but is not experienced yet. And so, learning is probably one of the most important things that a person can do when they have the opportunity going forward. The last three, the last two that we have appointed are people that, in one case, Nick, you, you said, I asked you the direct question, would you run? It was the fall and you said, "I don't know." You made a decision based on what happened, you know, in the ensuing time to, to run. Sherry had made a decision to run. And so, you know, it's not without precedence that we have appointed people who are, who have clearly stated either, either by their papers being pulled or by, in, in, you know, indication, in Sherry's case, that she would run. So, I kind of discount that, you know, that argument that there's some opportunity, some extra opportunity. Here's what I know. I know that Tom Wise has a two out of three chance of being one of your colleagues. There are three people running for three-year seats and two of them will be elected. So, there's a two out of three chance that the man sitting in this room will have the job. And I would say from a practical standpoint, the opportunity to be able to sit, listen, observe, participate where appropriate would be extremely valuable to a person that has a two out of three chance of being elected. Valuable, not so much to that person, but valuable to the committee. I also think, and I do agree, that if this somehow turned into a platform for Mr. Wise, the voters would make a clear decision as to how they would view that. That's going to be, if he's chosen, that would be the decision he'd have to make. But my feeling is that we have an opportunity to appoint a person who has a two out of three chance of being one of your colleagues. You have the opportunity to teach, to instruct, train, and get a person on the ramp. Based on that, my decision would be that I would support Tom Wise.
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Bobbin, or are you all set?
Just one final comment. Something Barry said in passing, but I want to just pick up. Barry, I think you said this, and if this is what you said, I agree with it, that the person who is appointed, if it were Mr. Wise, is not going to run as an incumbent. And that was, when I was appointed and then I was on the ballot, I was not the incumbent. It's just alphabetical, right? So, there's no kind of advantage in ballot placement or elsewise from, from being.
That actually is lower on the ballot.
You're alphabetical, right? I think Anderson was before Boyven when I ran, right? So, I was second. So, they're just, or do we, is that the point you made? I want to make sure we.
No, I mean, that's, that's, that's a fact. It's, that won't, this person won't be listed as an incumbent, but can use his time on the board as, as a, as a campaign piece.
And then, my final point was just, for me, it's, it's more a question of, given the very limited opportunity of this appointment to serve with this, with our, our school committee, for me, it's a very targeted, very narrow question of, for the agenda items that are before our committee, what experience, I feel, that best adds perspective to the board that I'm serving on in the next meeting or a couple meetings. And that's how my comments are directed. So, I'm not thinking beyond that. The voters will make their choice and that's a separate process. But I, I'm not comfortable bringing, you know, election considerations into this discussion personally. I don't think that is appropriate. Thanks.
Ms. Elverado. So, the election considerations, I think, are, are reality. It's just where we are on the calendar. As I see it, we have three candidates. Two of them have demonstrated either an in-depth knowledge of education by an entire professional career or several years of dedication involved in the school system. There were two comments that Mr. Wise made that left me concerned as far as his understanding of the functioning of the school committee. One is in regards to the open meeting law and the second is in regard into the budget and why funds are returned. So, we have no way of knowing what will happen in April. And so, to Nick's point of what's going to happen in the next seven weeks, we have three candidates, only one of whom may continue but may not. And so, in that seven weeks, which of the three is the one who's going to most be able to contribute immediately to the school committee in that time? And then whatever happens in April is obviously beyond all of our purview. For that reason alone, I would be inclined to support Mr. Quorum.
There's no further discussion. I'd like to ask Dr. Darty to help us move through the voting, which is roll call.
Sure. So, we're gonna have one candidate at a time and then I will ask each board or committee member to say yay, yes or no in terms of, for that candidate. You can only vote for one candidate out of the three in the affirmative. So, the, we'll go, again, we'll go in alphabetical order. So, Jeffrey.
Oh. If there's, not, if someone doesn't get six votes, how does that work?
If someone doesn't get six votes, then we'll go back, we'll, we'll go to two.
To all three or the two top vote?
The two top vote getters. Sorry, I should have said that if I didn't.
And Caitlin is recording this?
Yes. So, I'm just gonna go right in order because it's alternating.
Need a motion?
I'm sorry?
Do you need a motion?
A motion, yes. To put all, to put all three on the, yes.
Could I be recognized to so move that the names of Jeffrey Quorum, Quorum, I'm sorry, Jeff, Gina Healy and Thomas Wise be placed into nomination?
I need a second.
Second, second.
Second, second.
Mr. Friedman seconded.
Mr. Bobbin?
So, we each say one name?
We're doing a roll call vote.
For Jeffrey Quorum first.
This is for Jeffrey Quorum first?
Uh, no.
Mr. Ensminger?
No.
Mr. Robinson?
No.
Mrs. Alvarado?
Yes.
Yes. Dr. Doxer, Mr. Friedman?
Yes.
Mrs. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Berman?
Yes.
Ms. Barowski?
Yes.
And Mr. Halsey?
No.
That's it?
That's it? That's it? Six.
Is that, what was the final vote? Six in the, from?
All right, I want to thank all of the candidates. And I know Dr. Doxer said this, but I'm just gonna emphasize it, that we really encourage you to stay involved. I think you all have a variety of things to bring to, to the schools, to the town, and really encourage you to really continue that process. And so, it's all our business. I am going to adjourn this joint school committee select board meeting. I need a motion to adjourn. Ms. Barowski moved to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Berman. And we're adjourned. Thank you. Oh, I did this, I did this the other night. Can we vote to adjourn?
To vote to adjourn, yes.
We're voting to adjourn? Did, did, is that unanimous or are we not, do we have some no's?
I think you gotta do them. There's two boards here, they don't vote together.
Oh, okay.
We're staying on.
Sorry. All right. Let me start over. I'm going to, we're gonna end the joint meeting and I'm going to adjourn the school, I would like the school committee to adjourn.
I moved to adjourn. We need a second from the school committee.
Okay.
A second.
Mr. Bobbin seconded. Sorry. And I'm gonna, we're gonna vote to adjourn the school committee. All those in favor? Okay, there we go. Now unanimously, the school committee is adjourned.
Thank you to the school committee.
Select board has more.
The select board, may I take a motion to go into executive session?
You need, you need a full motion with the reason for going into the executive. Vanessa have that?
Yes, we're.
Yeah.
Hey Caitlin, do I have a motion?
Caitlin?
Returning to.
Right. Let's see if I can mic this. Move the select board adjourn to executive session to discuss a real estate transaction with the intention of returning once that executive session is closed.
Strategy with respect to acquisition of real estate?
Real estate, yeah.
We should really get this right.
I got the motion, huh? Thank you.
Where did John go? What happened to my, the board, the board?
What? All right. Yeah, we need. All right. Move to go into executive session to discuss interest in real estate where the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body and to reconvene in open session.
Approximately?
At approximately one hour from, approximately 8:30.
Okay, very good. Second, you need to do a roll call, Andy?
Barry?
Where's Berman?
Eric.
Jesus, get in the vote, will you?
John.
I gotta vote.
We have to vote.
Where'd everybody go?
What are we missing? Where's Halsey?
John!
Halsey, where the hell are you?
Jesus Christ.
We can do a roll call.
We have to wait for John.
We have to wait for John. Could you get him, could somebody?
Get a 20 on Halsey, please.
What? Okay, Vanessa, I'm afraid we're gonna have to take a five, we can do it without him?
Yeah, four is enough to go into executive session.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if every member had to be here for a roll call. All right, thank you.
Mr. Quorum.
So, any discussion on the, on the motion?
Yeah, roll call.
Hearing none, roll call. Mr. Ensminger?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Alvarado?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Friedman, yes. So.
Executive session is in, that one over there, Bob's waiting for us.
Thank you. And we are to return, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
We said that in the motion.
2019 is now back in session. I will turn the agenda, the single agenda item over to the town manager.
Okay, thank you. On the screen, it's, it's very similar, except for one article, it's identical to what we've handed you. When we get there, we'll explain it to you. I'll just go quickly. If anyone has any questions, some of this is boilerplate. Please let me know and I'll stop. First article is the annual election. Next few articles are dictated by, by charter. The first is reports, the second is instructional motions. Those are Articles Two and Three. Article Four is the capital plan. And that's where the charter stops in terms of what it requires to be on. The next articles are, Article Five is to amend the current year's budget, which we do absolutely expect some activity there. Article Six is if we have any unpaid bills, we just soon leave that on the warrant even though that we do not know of any, if any come up. It would be helpful for the business to be disposed of at April town meeting. Article Seven is to dispose of surplus property. We do know we do have some surplus property to be disposed. Article Eight is something that the Bylaw Committee and Matt worked on. I'll give you a little bit of background. The Bylaw Committee has voted to remove Section 6.2 from the general bylaw, which deals with surplus. And that's what they want town meeting to agree to. However, they have, and, and you can see in the language, they are not interested in deleting that section if the select board has not adopted a written set of policies that would replace it. Those written policies have already been written. Allison and Matt will be in to see you in March, I believe, March 26th. So, that would be a month ahead of town meeting. It should be fine.
Yes.
So, this would obviate the need to have a question to sell surplus property on the town meeting warrant and instead the select board would have its own discretion by a policy to dispose of said property?
I don't know about that. Does it matter on the dollar amount, Ray?
Yeah, below a certain level, I think.
It will matter on the, on the dollar amount.
If it's 25,000, I think we still have to go to town meeting.
Right.
And most of it isn't, but. And as it is now, the bylaw allows us to go to, go to FinCom for smaller amounts, but honestly, I very rarely do.
So, that would mean that, you know, as it, as it comes up, we can dispose of it in meetings as opposed to one fell swoop at town meeting?
And that will be very helpful because sometimes there's a quick turnaround needed to dispose of things that we hadn't anticipated.
We have to wait a year and be able to kind of do it.
For a town meeting anyway.
Right.
Thanks, Bob.
Article Nine is the annual article to take some money that's been allocated in the budget for OPEB and actually put it into the OPEB fund. And there will be funds available for that. Article Ten is where it's different in this version than is in your printed warrant. I'll describe the general circumstance and town council is likely to be able to answer some questions more exactly. There was, the DOR anticipated that as of late fall, perhaps December, that this problem would be solved legislatively, but it was not. So, now it is up to cities and towns to take care of this issue.
What is the problem?
And the issue is, if you recall, we get somewhere between five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars a year from the rate, from the cable ratepayers that we pass along to RCTV with a contract. Town meeting never sees that. It does pass through the general fund, but town meeting is not aware of it and has no reason to see it. The DOR has ruled that since it passes through the general fund, town meeting want to have a roll? So, this article, which was alone, would simply set up a revolving fund, much like water, sewer and stormwater, to receive such monies and then to spend such money.
So, this has nothing to do with that proposed rulemaking that we talked about, which might take away?
This is just to set up a vehicle that would allow this to happen much more transparently for town meeting. And then just parenthetically, as part of the town manager's budget, I learned today that I have to actually put this into the budget. So, that's kind of a new twist. It'll be water, sewer, stormwater, and then whatever we call this. And I'll, I'll just finish by saying, this is all very new. I'll say that DOR's guidance has been a little volatile. Again, they expected this to be solved a different way in December and the law is it has to be addressed by next July, so all of a sudden this spring, there's a rush to figure out how to do it. And council has done a lot of research and there's a couple of different options and this is clearly the one that the town accountant and town council agree with. I think at town meeting, this, this article will be okay to explain. I think the budget part might be tricky, 'cause they have never seen the budget for RCTV. Honestly, I have very rarely seen a budget for RCTV. So, that's gonna be a whole new discussion. Is there anything you think you should add, Ray?
So, the reason that, that we chose to do an enterprise fund is, an enterprise fund, you can appropriate the money even though it isn't there yet, that because, based on the anticipated revenues that are coming in. And the, if you had a, a more traditional revolving fund, you'd have to wait for the money to be there before you could, because, before it could be spent. And that's essentially would be a, a few months delay anyway. So, an enterprise fund, it's the same mechanism that you already use for water, sewer and stormwater. You appropriate the money based on your anticipated revenues for the upcoming year. So, Mr. Chair, so, so right now?
Yes, sorry.
Right now, we get money from Comcast and Verizon. How does that money then, does it go directly to RCTV or does it go, it comes to us and then we allocate to RCTV?
Yeah, what, what technically happens is an email comes to me, I send it to Caitlin, she sends it to Sharon. And then a check comes into Caitlin, she gives it to Sharon. Sharon then takes that money and gives it, if you will, or sends it to RCTV. So, it passes through the town's hands. And that was intentional by my predecessor, Peter, did not want it to go directly to RCTV. He wanted this to have an ability and this contractual language by which if they're not acting up to speed, we don't have to give it to them, with certain terms and conditions.
So, this is not gonna change that?
No, but as Dan knows, and the rest of you may not, RCTV's contract expired and I granted an extension. So, I just want to be careful in saying that we're currently in negotiations with RCTV to come up with a new agreement.
To be our provider?
Excuse me?
To be our provider?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's separate from the cable.
Right, the cable just basically, it comes. They give us money so that we can. Allocate it. Allocate it.
Right.
Our deal with them needs to be, you know, at arm's length from that. So, what's, I mean, I, I didn't know that. So, what's the process with that contract extension and?
We're in negotiations with a deadline.
And we're, I just want to be careful, that's not on the agenda. I understand, yeah, but I didn't, I didn't.
Right.
At some point, can we get an update?
A little bit, a little bit off the topic, but related to the topic. The proposed FCC rulemaking, Ray, are you familiar with what they were proposing down there to essentially not allow the cost of the PEG to be passed through the ratepayers? That was a proposed rule before, and we sent an objection in. Does anybody know if that rule was actually adopted or rejected or?
I've, I've not heard, Dan.
I've not heard.
That might have some bearing on.
I think it was a springtime decision. I think it was an April-May kind of decision. The cutoff for comments was like January.
Yeah, so it's not been made yet.
No, I don't think so.
We need to stay on top of that. That can have big implications.
All right, the next article is purely cosmetic. It's the inspection revolving fund that already exists, we're just changing the name of the project from Redding Village to the Metropolitan at Redding Station, which is what they call it now. So, no more, no less. Article Eleven is the more traditional set of revolving funds. Article Thirteen is the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Article Fourteen, just find it here, you might not have heard about this yet, but in discussing with our mutual technology staffs, as you might guess, three-year contracts are very common in municipal finance. You have to go to town meeting to get longer than a three-year. So, economically, usually, there's much better deals if you can do a four, five or six-year, 'cause that means you've gone to the trouble of getting permission. Well, in this one, we found something on both sides for the town and the school for backup technology, that we would like to have the ability to go beyond three years as a contract, as long as six years. It could be advantageous. If, if you recall, it was either one or two years ago, I think it was a year ago, the schools asked to do this for curriculum. They got a five-year permission. And you sort of don't want to ask town meeting, but when the deal is so good that the three year is, is five hundred dollars and the five year is five hundred and twenty dollars, you go, okay, I'm gonna ask permission. So, that's what we face in this issue and we both just want permission to go beyond the three years. And John and I will make a presentation on that. Then we get into some of the capital projects. Article Fifteen is to authorize debt for Turf Two. The board in my goal is updates, saw an update on some of these capital projects, which, you know, since we were canceled last night, we haven't discussed.
Bob, I have a question.
Hmm?
Regarding fifteen. Well, actually, more broadly, not necessarily specific to fifteen. So. We've been talking about the capital plan and where Turf Two field, Turf Two fits into it. And we received an email from a resident talking about closing the warrant and how the lights for Birch Meadow tie into Turf Two. So. What further conversation? Because FinCom obviously still needs to approve the budget, which will include the capital plan. So. How is there a possibility for us to change any of this after today or is this final?
No, this is it. You can always call a special town meeting within the annual town meeting if you have different business to accomplish, but this is what you're being requested to do.
Okay, so then.
So, specifically to the question that came in today, there is no request to authorize field lighting for Birch Meadow at this town meeting.
No, I think the question that was being asked, though, was the funds that had been previously allocated for Birch Meadow fieldlights, which is to the tune of about one point five million, why that wasn't being, one point four?
There is, there is no.
One million was, was authorized, one hundred thousand was spent.
Right.
Right, so that puts us at point nine.
Then we stopped. I was, I, I'm saying this because I was the chair at the time and I recommended we stop the project because it came in at a million four.
Right.
And we either had to significantly reduce which fields were covered or we had to go in and spend more money, given our financial situation at the time.
Right.
It was my strong recommendation to Bob that we just back away completely for another day.
True, yes. But it, in two, in November two thousand eighteen, town meeting, an additional five hundred thousand was added to be used for lighting of the five Birch Meadow fields. So, given the scope of Turf Two, is there a reason why that now one point four, because the hundred thousand is spent? So, now it's one point four. Why that isn't being allocated towards Turf Two?
I think your, your wording is allocated, but that's really not accurate. It's, it's a placeholder in a capital plan. It's no more, no less.
Yeah.
Town meeting has not allocated any funds at all, so it can't reallocate. No one has asked town meeting to fund Turf, the field lighting in the other four fields. It's on the capital plan and, and when I present a budget to FinCom, it'll remain in the capital plan for a future year. But there's nothing being proposed now. Now, a year from now, and as a practical matter, next fall, this will be a very useful discussion, 'cause it's going to be on the front burner, not on the back burner. But right now, I'm not proposing any action other than Turf Two.
But this fifteen is only, is only the turf, right? It doesn't even mention lights, does it?
It includes lights for Turf Two.
Just the field, it's not lights.
No, it is lights at Turf Two.
Turf Two, Article Fifteen includes lights. It's a full replacement of the field plus replacement of lights.
Right.
Because it has lights currently. So.
But that wasn't your point, was it?
Well, it's relevant, though. So.
I know, but I think, go ahead.
Give me a second. So.
Lights on fifteen? Did I, I might, did I get a, did I get a bad copy?
But, well, correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but lights is included.
They are included. When a, when an article is presented with an actual motion at town meeting, lights are anticipated, absolutely. For Turf Two.
That's not what this article says.
It says improvements to the field, so lights would fall under.
All of the cross incidental related there, too.
So. So, where is this funding going to be appropriated from?
For Turf Two? Part of the town manager's and then FinCom's annual budget. It'll come up under debt or capital or both.
In other words.
In other words, it's not business for tonight.
Right, and, 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 yeah, it was in a, in a capital plan.
Right.
But it hasn't been approved for spending.
And the individual question knows full well, she has the complete ability to offer amendments to the capital plan on the floor of town meeting.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Article Sixteen, John and I met yesterday, John Darty and I met yesterday again to sort of hash out how to move forward. This is the building security article for town and school buildings. We think, we're ninety-nine percent sure, maybe ninety-five percent sure, that an executive session in April will be appropriate for the three elected boards and FinCom to attend, to get an update on this. For those of you that attended the only other executive session we had, you'll realize that we shared a little more in executive session than you wouldn't open session, but not a lot. With building security, the intention is not to ever share a lot with a lot of people, obviously. But we do want to have authorization for this. I've recently talked to our senator and gave him our timeframe. There is four million dollars in a bond bill for this purpose. So, a, I, I believe we want to go full speed ahead with the authorization, but until we actually issue the debt and schedule the project, we have to have another discussion. Senator Lewis said if you want to move ahead this summer, you will not have any funding from the state. If you want to wait another one or two years, you may or may not have funding from the state. So, that'll be a different discussion for a different day, but the first step is to get authorization.
Yes, Barry. So, is there a dollar amount that's gonna be asked for?
Not in the warrant, but a motion right now would be made for four million. That's the anticipated.
On the floor of town meeting or?
It'll be part of the budget process.
Part of the budget.
Yeah, you'll see an article in the capital plan for four million.
That'll be bond, not bonded then, or do we have?
It will. Well, my, right now, my anticipation would be to ask for the authorization for four million and to borrow it over ten years if approved, subject to those other things I just said.
That's under the levy limit. We're not, you're looking for an exclusion.
Correct. And for instance, just as a hypothetical, if we think there's state funding or grant funding out there, we could plan to pay four million or some amount, but we could authorize a higher amount at town meeting and make it clear that if some other money comes in, we can accept it. Because otherwise, if we just ask for four million, we can't accept any, anything beyond that.
I thought once we kind of go out with it, that's the number that we're stuck with or, or we have, no? Or, or if, let's say, more money comes in and we don't, let's say, we authorize four million, we only have to borrow two, 'cause we found two somewhere else? That we then go back and?
Right, undo the authorization.
Deauthorize it?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all correct, but if we authorize four million, but we have an opportunity to spend four and a half million and we find another half million, you'd like to have the authorization for four and a half million, that's all.
So, we're gonna go out with something higher than we think we need?
Right now, it's four, but to be discussed.
All right.
The next two articles are water capital. You've, you're pretty well aware of the Auburn Water Tank, which is Article Seventeen. And Article Eighteen is a much smaller project, water main project on Grove Street that's too large to pay in one lump sum in an annual project, so we'll have to borrow.
Okay. All this is, all these borrowings are within the levy?
Well, Seventeen and Eighteen are within the water fund and part of the water budget. The other two are within the levy limit, yes.
So, there's no debt exclusions being proposed here?
Correct. Article Nineteen is just to accept about six hundred thousand, most likely from chapter roadway assistance from the state. Article Twenty is the annual budget.
Could I, could I go back to Nineteen, Bob?
Yeah.
You said something about receiving money from the state under Article Nineteen, but is that right?
Mm-hmm.
But the, the sentence, sentence, the first, the first sentence or the whole sentence, the start of it, says, "To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer from available funds, borrow or otherwise provide some or sums of money for highway projects." To me, that sounds like we're asking the town for money.
That's a catch-all way to accept money in any way it may come in.
Okay.
If we were gonna borrow it, we'd have to ask for a debt authorization, for instance.
Okay.
A lot of these funds are reimbursed anyway, aren't they? So.
This one is not, but some of them are. Yep.
Is that six hundred K is more than we got last year?
About the same. It's not gonna change much. One year, we got nine hundred thousand, it's mostly been six hundred.
We spent it all.
Yeah.
Article Twenty-One is to acquire a parcel of land. It's in Timberneck Swamp. I'm in touch with the owner to be determined further whether it's a gift or whether it's I'm in touch with the owner to be determined, uh, further, whether it's a gift or whether it's for sale. It's a parcel that, I know conservation is very, very interested in the town acquiring. By using this process at town meeting and acquiring it for general purposes, um, we can then later transfer it to ConsCom. Um, if the owner of the land should decide, and so far he has not, to gift it to ConsCom, we can skip the town meeting process entirely. But so far, he, he's not interested in gifting it to ConsCom. Uh, Article twenty-two is to, oh, sorry, someone have a question? Article twenty-two is to issue an RFP to see if any land's available to suit the needs of that purpose stated or the, the conditions stated. Article twenty-three is another unique parcel, if you will, near the Simons Hockey Rink. It's a small parcel behind the baseball field that we might like to acquire. Article twenty-four, I'm, I'm no expert at, but this is the gender-neutral, uh, bylaw that the bylaw committee has worked on. Matt's the expert, along with town council. You can see this article is extensive. All the specific changes are listed that are recommended by the...
This is every reference to...
This is their, the ref, the bylaw committee has scrubbed all the bylaw, and this is their suggestions. So, um, I believe that the moderator will say the four corners of the article are what these words are. You know, just 'cause you're touching a paragraph doesn't mean it's open for another discussion. It's just for this purpose, to make it, uh, gender-neutral. I think in the, in the closing of the warrant, it can go either way, but where the bylaw committee has voted on this, I think the bylaw committee should be the sponsor, just, just so you know, and in the next one, the same way.
Yeah.
Article twenty-five is, is another piece of work by the bylaw committee to just do some real simple cleanups. You can read them and see how simple they are. While they were reviewing the bylaw, they just basically found some typos.
Yeah.
Um, parenthetically, they're also working on their ten-year review of the bylaw. That's a different issue for another day, but they're engaged in that process. And, uh, last but not least, is, uh, folks who haven't come to enough town meetings might get booted out by the last article. So it's a warrant, um, consisting of twenty-six articles as presented.
Anything else, Bob?
That's it, thank you.
All right, um, could, motion?
Move that the board close the warrant for the two thousand nineteen annual town meeting to be held on April second, two thousand nineteen, consisting of twenty-six articles as presented and amended.
Second.
Just to note that, uh, the reason the date is April second is that Article One is actually the election, which happens on April second. The remainder are dealt with, the town meeting's starting April twenty-second, just so you know.
Thank you.
Barry, second.
Uh, yes, discussion. All in favor, is this another roll call vote?
No.
This is just sending these forward. We haven't voted as we, as we may, on individual, on some of these...
At this point, it's roll, it's not roll call, 'cause it's not...
Can I move to adjourn?
Um, yeah, second.
No, Barry had a question.
I had a question before.